Okay, good evening. This is the Rutland Town Planning Commission and it's Thursday, June 20th of 2024. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance this evening, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Welcome, everyone. Approval of the agenda.
Oops, thank you.
Hi.
Didn't see him blow away.
You're voting already?
We approve the agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Right, motion and second have been made. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, public comment. No public here in the town office and doesn't look like there's any on the Zoom. New business we can skip over because we've got old business to talk about this evening. First up is S213. If you remember, that is the Wetlands and River Corridor flood protection legislation that passed. It's going to be or is already Act 121. So that made it through the process and was not vetoed. So now begins, I think if you recall, there's going to be several years of outreach that the state would do. And so I went and asked, there's two really good flood managers in the state, the two top people, and Ned Swanberg is one of them. And he actually is Kyle's boss. So I asked him, given that it's going to be a rollout of a couple of years, even though it passed, what would be his recommendation for Rutland Town, which was considering River Corridors, which is a part of that Act 121? And I believe this was sent around to you folks.
Yep.
He basically said it would be, you know, go ahead and do it. There's, you know, there's, there are more benefits than probably not doing it. And we can use what we have now that we've been working with, with Kyle for language. So that was, that was his take. And even after, you know, even after I asked him, you know, like, it's, I mean, it's, it'd be a lot easier if we could wait because the state's going to regulate River Corridors under this act. It's going to happen. But he's just saying there's, there's a lot of reasons to do it. And, and part of that rationale was in the, another attachment that you had that looks like this. It's a graph. And these are damages for municipal municipalities in flooding just in 2023, which wasn't a great year, granted. So protective measures, they would probably be rebuilding roads and ditches, things like that. Right? Would everybody think yet, you know, there's a debris removal. So we've got, the blue is the total number of projects and the dark blue is the money that was expended. So that was just 2023. And that wasn't even, you know, assistance for private individuals. This is just to municipalities. So, so I went to Ned because Kyle's really busy. He may or may not have time to come back to talk to us. So I just wanted to get the lay of the land. And any questions about, about the act or how, what the state is recommending at this point?
So do you know when it does go into effect? Is it?
If I remember correctly, it's 2027. And, you know, I, I think, I think buried into Ned's comments is also like, who knows what's going to happen when it goes out to the public? Maybe things are going to get changed a little bit. So I, I think he didn't say that right outright. But I think it's, it's in there that, you know, go ahead and do it. And we would really appreciate if you did because things might still go, you know, a little unexpected. If there's a real outcry or whatever, or, or if there's a delay in getting imposed statewide. So I think this puts us in a slightly different place than we were thinking before. Or, or does it? I mean, but I think the last time we talked about it, we said, okay, we've got a couple of years to think about this. Right?
And we, and we had some, some disagreement. Some of us wanted to go ahead and do it. Which is what he wants, you know, that's what the recommendation is, yeah.
Yeah, that was the night that Mary was sitting here with us. Yeah. Howard, what do you think?
I'm sure it's going to be a lot of work and I just, not sure. Certainly, we don't want to spin our wheels and try to put something together that isn't going to go anyplace. The state obviously is, isn't there yet, right? If we do this, we're going to be doing it on our own for the town.
Well, we'll be doing what some other towns around the state have done with DEC's help and, and doing it with the template that they created.
Okay.
Yeah, so not exactly on our own. We would, we would pick up where, where everything was before Act 121.
Okay.
And anybody, any, any municipality can, can adopt for corridors if they so choose. And that's, that's a key phrase, if they so choose, which will change in a couple of years. There won't be a choice. And I think if anything changes, it would be, you know, what they have in their model, their template for, for bylaws for ordinance.
And there's a potential that it would be of value to us if we have.
Right, well, there's a percentage allocation that if there is an event, and the likelihood of an event is becoming increasingly more prevalent. And so we would benefit from the state allocation of seven and a half percent or whatever that amount was.
Yeah, it's an extra of five percent.
Five percent.
We're at 12 and a half percent or ERAF net right now, and the max is 17 and a half.
Right, but we would get an additional five percent off the 12.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I know if you look at some of these numbers, five percent is, you know.
It's not negligible.
Right. I don't know. So we, we talked a while ago about working first with the commercial and retail people. And we also talked about maybe recruiting Joe Kraus. Is it Joe Kraus? Because he was here.
He attended one of our meetings, he was on the board of Trout Unlimited, right?
Yep.
Yep, and so is there any consensus tonight on which way we should go? Or do you want to think about it a little bit more?
We don't have a, very many of our board here to discuss it. How many are missing now? Oh. Are the alternates?
We've got.
There, there are nine of us normally if everybody's here.
Okay.
The five.
So we're missing four.
Okay.
Oh, right, right.
There were five of us, we're missing four.
I think we should think about it a little more.
Norman, Jerry, Andy, and, and Jim.
Mary Beth?
Oh, I just think, yeah, giving it a little more time and then I think that's a good point, having the rest of the people or more of us to, to talk about it.
Okay.
Would be good.
Do, right off the top of your heads, is there any other information you want for the next time we talk about this?
Just, we'll just, I guess it's just not information from them, but if, if we, if we moved ahead and attempted to roll this out, we would, we would be responsible for monitoring, for enforcing it, let's say it like that.
It wouldn't quite be like Moon Brook. It would be, it would be up to the state, as I recall.
So if we, if we found something, we could notify the state?
Yeah, I think that's how it was.
I remember, I remember.
Is I need to brush up on it too?
Yeah, well, it seemed so long ago.
Yeah, yeah, it's been strung out.
So I'm looking at a draft, well, actually no, this is, well, flood hazard and river corridor bylaws. I don't know, we already have.
Yep, that, that's what it's called.
Okay, so be kind of combined.
Yeah, they've got one for non-towns with non-zoning, with no zoning.
That's us.
Right.
It would be us.
I just think, you know, for doing flood hazard and river corridor, it's a lot like zoning. I think maybe it might make sense to just try for that, you know?
Try for zoning?
And include it in it because it's so, you know, it is pretty similar. Like reviewing what's exempted and what, you know, is a conditional use and.
Yeah, the, the, the language is, is very much like zoning. But it only, it only deals with special flood hazard areas and everything, well, everything on that map. So everything that's colored on that map on the wall, and you, you too can't see that, but.
But it touches all, all quadrants of our town.
Yeah, but not every street, not every neighborhood.
True.
So in that way, I mean, it's zoning like language, but it's not zoning in the sense that it's townwide.
Right, well, I'm thinking of like the work required to evaluate, evaluate that and, you know, would there be another staff person needed and that kind of, like how would it impact the town in that way, I guess would be.
Yeah. Let's look at the ordinance again. I'll send that around.
And that's how we, a lot of that is how we roll it out, how we decide to roll it out. Whether we get any support from elsewhere.
Right.
I still go back to the same thing that I've mentioned at least two or three times or four times before is this is an issue of education more than it is an issue of any type of legislation or regulatory action. And I think that it is worth doing just for the educational piece that it would bring to the, to the town. So that's all I have to say.
And I forgot to mention, I've, the state climatologist has a new map of where the flooding has happened, has been happening in Vermont. I forget the timeframe, last five years, last 10 years, and it's up and down the Green Mountains. And those communities that happen to be draining off the Green Mountains. And it's just really astounding that, you know, I never, I never realized that looking at the list of towns, but when you put it on a map. So my point is, we've got some towns that, where that water will run off to. And it looks like it's going to be a pattern that, and you know, it could be just like a weather pattern. When, when storms hit the, the mountains, they, they drop rain. They don't just necessarily go up and over. So it's, I can send that map out too.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Okay, should we move on?
Sounds good.
Next one should be quick. You know, we, we talked about, we agreed that we'd go for a municipal planning grant from the state for housing. So the question is, when, what meeting, what upcoming meeting would you like Logan Solomon to come back and just, he, he will, he will prepare the application for us. He's with the Regional Planning Commission, the housing guy. So do we want to see, our next meeting would be the 11th? Just one, one meeting in July? Wow.
Yeah.
July 11th and August 1st and August 22nd.
The 22nd is just before the townwide celebration.
And I don't think we have a timeline yet for when, even when the new application materials are going to be coming out. So there's real, not a real rush, but there's not much Logan can tell us right now until he gets that information. But the applications usually are usually due in September or October.
I would suggest we invite him in as soon as possible so that we have the greatest amount of time to be able to review the work and provide any input prior to the submission of the application.
So as soon as July 11th?
Unless somebody has an objection.
I'm just concerned that I may not be here till.
Is, is it a conflict with anyone else? In this large group we have tonight?
So the, in August, it's the first and the 22nd. That's what you just said, Bill, right?
Uh, yes.
I am likely not to be here on the first, but I don't know that that matters.
It looks like I'll be.
July 11th?
Oh, you'll be here?
Okay, so we'll.
And any of those work for me?
Excellent.
So you're going to try for July, shoot for July 11th?
Yeah.
Okay, that's good for me.
Okay. Now, the pocket park. It might still be alive. The license hasn't come through yet, but the archaeological resource assessment was done. It was done by a, a private consultant. And pretty interesting stuff in there, although nothing to put, you know, to hit the brakes or any red lights. Basically, it said, you know, it's a very rich historical area from Native Americans to early settlers, to early Rutland, some of its first mills and industries, military, roads coming through, and then railroads coming through, and then the marble industry to where we are today. So, so there's, there is probably also a rich artifact deposits, I think they call it, there. However, because it, so many things were going on that a lot of those were destroyed. So based on that, and, and they looked at all 15 of our suggestions for the pocket park. And they said, you know, this was going to be, in other words, kind of a light touch on, on that property. So they were not concerned. A couple, a couple of things to keep in mind. If the, if we go with the canoe kayak launch and spur trail, which is that right now it's at the far north end of that parcel. Depending on, you know, how much ground disturbance is done to do that launch, they might want to take another look at it. They like to see the, the plans and all. There's Norm. And then the other, just one other thing they noted. One of the things we'd like to do is the brush removal on Simon's Avenue. So especially getting a lot of the invasive, just clearing that area out. So again, if there's any stump in root removal, root removal, they would like to do more archaeological testing of that. And I'm not sure we would do that, but, but we haven't gotten that far.
But, but it sounds like we know that that's, that would cause us additional certification or whatever.
Yeah.
And we could go out of our way to avoid that.
Right. So it, it went from these private archaeological consultants and pretty much giving their stamp of approval to this. Then part of the process is they send it to the state historical preservation office for review. So that's where we are right now. And that's, that's the VDHP or what used to be called SHPO. So we're waiting to hear back from, from them, see if, if they see it the same way. And these people were from Maine that did this archaeological stuff. So I think in the meantime, you know, the licensing is still on hold, waiting for this archaeological stuff to clear up.
So GMP's license is on hold until this gets.
They're, they're re-licensed, yeah. Yeah, so, I mean, I mean, this is pretty much the summary paragraph. Due to the small size and scope of proposed projects, which are focused on 15 specifically, specific relatively low impact improvements largely situated in previously impacted areas such as roadbed fill and areas of scrap marble dumps, additional archaeological work is not recommended. So, a little encouraging.
Yep.
I don't know how much of that you caught, Norm.
Well, no, but it, it triggers something else. Did we, if you're finished. Did we ever get an archaeological report on the proposed solar field on Route?
No, I, I forgot to do that for this meeting. I, I think it's still in the works.
Really?
So I, I've asked our energy planner at our RPC and, yeah. We don't think there's been, but I'll, I'll go through the records and see what's happening with that.
It's been a while.
Yeah. And, you know, that may or may not, it may hold up that project and may negate it. I don't know.
Which project? Remind me, which project?
So it's called Post Road Solar off Route 7 North.
Yeah.
It's the one up, it's west of the Armory.
Yeah.
And behind the auto dealer.
Right. It, it's just we've had conversations about so many, I was losing track of which one that was. Yep, I remember discussing that. That's not the Thomas one though. No, that's not related to the Thomas.
There was a Thomas right there at the dairy farm project that was built.
Right, but this was not, there was no Thomas property related to this one?
Yes, there was.
Oh, there was, okay.
The developer bought the land from.
It's separate, it's separate from the farm.
No, that I knew. I, I was just trying to, in the, in the moment, I was just trying to straighten things out in my head. Yeah, the Armory one that is part of the top, that was part of the top. Yep, got it.
So very incremental, slow progress, but progress nonetheless. Howard?
For the pocket park, is there anything planned on the northern end of it, up near the, you know, the roadway to sidewalk?
Well,
Historic markers.
What we found out when we looked at this, like, it's been three years, was that VTранs AOT has an extended right-of-way up there.
Yes, I think, I believe that's right, yeah. The only reason why I mention this is the Fire District and Center Rutland and West Rutland, we're, we're joining together and and looking at putting a pressure reducing valve to the valves up, way up in that north end, up, up near the sidewalk, with doing some, sure they're working with the state trying to get a permit now to, to do that. But way from, you know, up in the grass area.
Yeah.
Probably, well, very, the, the existing water line, water main is way up, it's parallel to the sidewalk. It goes out to the fire station. And so you gotta, you gotta put a pressure reducing valve in and then there's, and then tie that into a water line that comes from down near the bridge. And it goes diagonally up, there's a hydrant where you first turn onto Simon's Avenue on the left. There's some construction work that we hope is going to happen in there for the.
Yeah, how big is the valve, Howard?
Well, it's a, it's a good sized vault. I don't know the exact size of it, but it's a vault that has a ladder going down into it and, and it has a lot of piping and, and information in it. That's, it's not, it's a good sized vault, just put it that way. It's.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know if it's 10 foot diameter or what it is, but it's, it could be something like that.
Yeah, I, I think they will be amendable because they know it's a weird shaped and size right-of-way.
But this conduit is already there, is correct.
Sounds like it.
The conduit's already there and it must run through the right-of-way, right?
That's correct. It's in, it runs.
It's in the right-of-way. So it, it's, I mean, I would imagine that what, whatever provision exists for that to have been constructed within the right-of-way or the right-of-way granted after the construction would still be accessible if something needed to be done, right? I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but it, it seems logical to me that if they already coexist, that whatever provision exists for the cohabitation would allow for the, the introduction of that pressure valve in an existing piece of conduit.
But it's all done. It's just going to be at grade level. I mean, it's just going to, there's no obstruction sticking above ground, but there will be a manhole there with a with a cover that'll open up and they can go down into it, but there, there's no, no structure above ground. It's all below.
So it shouldn't interfere with the right-of-way. That's, that's the whole point. Right?
Yep. It's a, and I know Auto Creek Engineering has been working on this for some time and we're expecting to get an answer soon as to what's, what's going on. I'm not sure if they're being held up by the state because they, they got it, obviously, you know, get a an agreement with the state to do that.
That's, that's probably one of the best companies you could work with for this kind of stuff.
Sure, yeah, that's, Robert Clark is doing it. But it's, something is going to happen soon. I, we've got the the diagram, the, the instruction, the diagram and everything, I've got that, but I think it's just, they got to get the agreement with the state. But that shouldn't affect anything that we're doing.
No.
No, yeah, what we were, yeah, what, what may be affected with that right-of-way in regards to the pocket park was maybe that launch and the trail down to the, the canoe launch, if we still go with that. If we're going to move the DAR water vessel thing, that would have to be. water vessel thing, that would have to be probably go across or go, it's in the right-of-way now, so it would, it would go out of the right-of-way in one location, come back in at another location. And they were, they were initially okay with that.
Okay.
And then if we wanted to add some signage that we've talked about, they would have to approve that. And they were, they were, they said that's doable.
Because there's some signage there already, I think.
Yeah.
So it would just be a question of replacing that.
And I think all of, maybe some of the parking spaces were in the right-of-way.
The ones that are on, that are perpendicular to Simon's.
Yeah, there's a northern set of parking spaces and a southern set, so it'd be the ones closest to Business Route Four.
To Business Route Four, yeah. And they would go perpendicular to Simon's Ave.
Yeah.
Perpendicular to what?
Simon's Ave. So that, Simon's Ave runs this way, the parking spaces. I think there were four lined up perpendicular to Simon's, facing the park area.
Thanks for mentioning that, Howard, and if you wouldn't mind giving us updates as, I think that might move a little bit faster than the federal licensing for.
Well, I've got a, you know, I can send you the the drawing that we have of it. I can send that to you.
Okay, okay, we can share that around.
As a start, sure. Yep.
Yeah, so any other questions about the archaeological review? Okay. Let's see, we've got, I wanted to add a little bit about, giving you an update on the Cortina from the select board meeting the other night. The, the owners in, in the most recent agreement, they agreed to put locks and backdoor, and alarms on the back doors. And they just haven't done it. And how long has it been, Bill? That they've had a chance to do it?
The agreement's been a place now for a while, so.
For three or four months, right?
Oh, longer than that. That was last year.
That's on the back door of the Cortina?
Yeah.
The back doors.
So the police department is like, you know, until that gets fixed, anyone can, and they are.
Entering.
Entering and exiting and doing whatever. I don't know what the, what about the health ordinance that JP was?
Currently being reviewed by our town attorney.
Okay. I didn't think I had heard much about it. Okay, we got a backlog with the town attorney.
Yep. So we're on the town line celebration?
Yes. So, it is August, Saturday, August 24th. We can't see it on that calendar. It's not quite a bit further along.
Time we meet will be there.
Ten to one-ish, two? Okay. What, what are the special events?
The committee's met a couple times and as of yet, they, they haven't really coordinated any.
Oh. So there might be some last-minute work of Bill Sweet's?
But there isn't any, like, last year we had the great, that great theme, whether we don't have it, they didn't. The committee is Sharon and Kurt this year, and there's not, there's not a.
Oh, the chemistry is not.
Not a theme this year, so. But we do have a few things confirmed. A lot of, you know, a lot of the core things we've done. Mark Foley retired, so there's no happy helicopter anymore.
All right.
No more what?
Happy cow.
Oh, happy cow.
So we are, we are, we have an alternate plan for that, but, but largely it's just, we don't have a lot of booths set up. I've reached out to a couple organizations, but I haven't heard back yet, so.
The Hitchcock Department of Medical Helicopter was just awesome last year. That's probably one-off.
No, the guy, the guy that was coordinated retired. I haven't heard, I haven't heard back from the guy that's taking his place yet, so. Trying to push a little bit, so.
Well, I guess this boils down to whatever the planning commission decides to do is going to be like one of the star events.
The mini grant, I would love to use that. It's just, we haven't done any of it yet, so. Love to do something with that.
So.
How much do we have? No?
Four thousand. Right? And you can do some publication-type stuff. There's some, there's some weird limitations to that.
I, I know Chindon did a pretty extensive event and used that money for it, and I like the idea of, of residential, like, the thermal imaging camera for.
Yes, that, yes.
I think it's a really good, that'd be a really good use of it and.
And it would be lent out, right? Not just for that day, maybe for.
No, no, like, people can come and borrow it.
And come back and bring it back. Okay, so that's, that's a great idea. And since we don't have an energy or an active energy committee, or the energy committee hasn't met in a long time, you can continue to work with Jeremy, the planner, regional planning commission, on that $4,000. That's great. That's great. So some other ideas are doing something around what we, what we, what we would like to see for the housing grant and what comes out of that. Doing some education on river corridors. And maybe something on the Pocket Park. It's it's a little hard to explain, but we can, we can have the map there and just say there's been some progress.
Some photos, enlarged photos?
Photos of.
Pocket Park, the location.
Well, we have the small maps that we were using for the.
I know, we've been using them for years.
Yeah, I mean, if that could be laminated on a, on a poster the size of what's hanging on the
Yep.
on the wall there for the, is that flood mitigation? I can't remember which one that is. Was that River Cor, yeah, flood hazard and, floods hazard areas. We could have that available too, to show, demonstrate and discuss. We could have a couple of PowerPoint presentations. We could even have somebody talk about these educational initiatives. It could all be about education.
We just have a laptop there and?
Yeah. You could have one for, you know, for each, I mean, we've had a number of presentations.
Yeah, I've got copies of most of them.
Yep. And we could take some time at our twenty-second meeting to actually plan for that and rehearse or whatever if you want. Am I back then? Yeah, I think I am. I'll get back Thursday from my vacation, my own vacation, so.
It's just a couple of days before the.
Right. Before the event. So, I mean, that's, I would dedicate a significant portion of our time at that meeting just to rehearse and finalize anything. Bill already contacted me and Block will be there. I'll be there as part of Block. I can do double duty. It doesn't even matter.
Who else is available?
Um, so I should be. Oops, sorry.
Yep, go ahead.
Sorry, are you talking, Howard?
Norm said he would likely be.
Yeah.
Mary Beth?
Well, like, and thinking back to last time, there was a lot of people stopping in for a couple minutes just to talk to us and then leaving. So there's so much going on. So maybe we could rotate through and each, you know, if we have multiple people take different shifts, like I think we did last time too.
Mm-hmm. So we've got a four-hour event?
Yeah, so I could easily do like two hours, but probably not the whole four, with the kids and everything.
And first shift sets up and.
Second shift takes down.
Right. I think I want to get some tape for that banner.
We have a banner?
Oh, yeah. It's big. It's big and it doesn't quite work on the canopy, if we can get another canopy from. What's that, Mary Beth?
Oh, so that reminds me too, we've been, so for Valamont and Trails, we've kind of been on hold for a long time because the Valamont group has, I think they had a consultant working on it, but they, they were developing a master plan for the whole Valamont for the state. And so we're kind of on hold, looking at the Rutland area until that comes, came out, but I think it's, I haven't gotten an update lately, but I think it's supposed to come out in June or July. And at the last townwide celebration, we had a few people who said they were interested in being involved with Trails and so, maybe we should have something on that if that does come out.
Yeah, and, and what's in that report?
So that'll be basically the plan for where the Valamont Trail would be in Vermont. And so early on, a group of people from Mendon, Rutland City, Rutland Town, this was two years ago about, been involved since then on trying to make sure that it goes through Rutland and connects to Pine Hill Park and so it's looking like that would happen, but the details are still all up in the air. So that'll, once we have that report out, it'll provide a little more clarity and then we can work on the kind of more local details. On, you know, does it, ideally it would connect through Northwood Park and connect with our, the mountain bike trails that were put in last year. And then connect to, and, you know, use the sidewalk in the town, obviously. Would utilize the crossing across Route Seven that's proposed. And then connect with Pine Hill Park and keep going. Like down to Polley and Slave Valley. And so that's kind of the general plan, but.
You're thinking, you're thinking like a little more education on the Valamont?
Right, yeah. I don't know if we'll be quite ready the end of August, but I'll keep an eye out for it and yeah, then it could be an educational piece. And I know people are interested in it because we had questions on it last time and.
Okay.
Does the, does the rec get involved, Bill? Does?
Oh, well, Mike Rowe is involved with this group too.
With Valamont. I'm not, yeah, I was just talking about for, besides the pool. I mean, there are other things that we could promote. I mean, just hiking and walking trails. I just don't remember what Mike does.
Disco, there's pickleball, there's the walking trails or biking trails. Oh, yeah, all of it's available.
No, I, right, I was just wondering if there were any flyers or handouts that Mike could make available.
Haven't really anything. We're trying to work on trail maps, but we haven't gotten that far yet, so.
Yeah, that'd be a great idea.
Possibly just, just talking about it, maybe if there's nothing to hand out. But just, just going through what Dana just did, just talking about what is available, what will be available.
I mean, we could just have a list on a table or something like that and just say, here, this is.
Flyers that are, we printed that are at the pool, they're on the table out here, they're in the office, they're online, so, yeah.
Oh, okay.
That's just about the pool? That has everything?
The townwide celebration.
Oh, yeah. That's great. We could have some of those there and we can just refer people to the.
You're thinking just Northwood?
I'm sorry?
You're thinking just Northwood?
Uh, well, because we could, we can make a recommendation for people to just take a look, here, take a flyer and go and look, walk around. Is what I was thinking. I mean, if we have other resources that we'd like to promote, absolutely do that, but this is an opportunity for people to wander around and see what's available, doing a little bit more than just coming saying, oh, this is great, getting an ice cream cone and leaving. Engagement is what I'm looking for and I, I thought that if we had something, you could say, oh, this is all available to you right here. Why don't you take a few minutes and, and scope it out? Encouraging them then to come back later on and, and make greater use of the resources. I mean, that's, that's just my
Why would that be in our purview when not the rec department?
Well, there really isn't a rec department. I mean, there's Mike and there's a committee. So, and he's, he's so busy during that day.
Oh, with everything else.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
I was also the, I was just saying, Mike's also the gym teacher at the school, the whole school here, and then runs the pool and so.
I was just coming up with some ideas that would be low maintenance, low impact for us, but high value for people. And so, I mean, if we're, we're staffing a table, we could talk about all of these things. I mean, it's, I mean, it's our purview in the sense of, we do the planning, but you know, partnering with other, other departments is not a bad thing. They give us the resources, we talk about them. From an educational standpoint, whether it's the Pocket Park, I mean, when we're talking about recreating, if future plans, Pocket Park, things like that. I mean, we could talk about Giorgetti, that's mostly for for Little League and.
And city though.
I'm sorry, not.
Oh, you mean Dewey?
Dewey Field, Dewey Field. Sorry.
Wrong municipality.
Wrong municipality. I, I don't know, I'm too tired. It's past my bedtime. My light's shut off at seven.
Bill, what's, what's the timetable for the crossing at seven? Route Seven in Post Road?
We, we have just selected our first choice for a design consultant. Now, we have to get approval from the state for that choice, so we can send them a request for a proposal for their services.
Okay. And the money runs out?
In 2029.
No, still have time.
Stephanie said this is a four-to-five-year project, so, yeah.
So what type of a crossing, what type of a crossing are we looking at? We don't know.
This is a shared-use path from Town Line to Post Road. This is not just a crosswalk. That is almost the last part of it, so.
From Xfinity?
From the Town Line at Xfinity, yep, to the Post Road intersection.
Right. And, and there was.
Crossing the road?
Crossing.
Including crossing Route Seven?
Yes.
Yes, and there would be, they were talking about some sort of automation to, to.
Vtrans crosswalk signals, yeah. Vtrans, Vtrans has to put on the crosswalk.
Right.
Yeah.
With the, with the rectangles and the blinking lights?
I've asked you, Vtrans, I think, we don't really dictate to Vtrans what they do, that we say this is what we'd like and they do how they want to do it, so, yeah, I can't.
Wasn't there talk about coordinating with the lights? That, that there'd be some way to like make everything red, so.
Traffic light engineers.
Is part of the, is part of the package?
We have to get, we have, that's that's like a four or five steps at least down, 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 down the line, before we even get to construction, we gotta get through all that stuff, but we have to select, we have to get approval to, to, we have to get approval to solicit our first choice for a proposal to work on the project.
And, and just for, for a conceptual perspective, are we talking about the east side of Route Seven?
West side, where there's already.
West side, oh yeah, I'm sorry. That's what I meant. Yeah, I meant to say west side, where there's already a sidewalk, at least up by Xfinity.
Well, the sidewalk stops at the city line.
And then it's a path.
At the city line.
It's a dirt path from there.
Yeah, it, yeah. It, it's a rumbly dirt path. It's, it's a gully.
That was part of the justification for, there's a worn path there, so that was helped with, helped with the process, so.
Yep.
This is a post-road and severing it?
Right, so it'd be on the west side, it would go all the way down to almost the pumping station, and then it would cross the road.
Well, yeah, it wouldn't get, it wouldn't get to GMP's site, no. It would stop, it would stop at the intersection, yeah.
Right, and then cross.
Yep.
And connect with the sidewalk.
Yep.
On the north side?
Yep, to the existing sidewalk, yeah.
Right. So it would cross.
Sidewalk on Post Road by the school is going to be finished and paved this summer, so there'll be the sidewalk from, they'll pick up the sidewalk at the driveway from the school and go up to Shazana Drive.
Great. And then there'd be a path through Shazana up.
Oh, it's the stoppage Shazana Drive.
Oh.
Up, up in the Shazana development, there'll be an entrance to the path to go up to the park, yeah.
Right, so you could drive, you could bike along Shazana.
Yes.
Up to the, the path to Northwood.
Yes.
Right, great, great. That's what I meant. That's great.
Well, good luck with the. Well, good luck with the, that convoluted process.
Well, process.
Good, good thing there's plenty of years. And there's plenty of money, right? To probably do every.
Expensive project, but it's, it's worthwhile.
And that, that ties into the Valamont. Right? Mary Beth, that's great.
Definitely, yeah.
Okay, well, let's, yeah, eat, yeah.
It, it almost seems like that part of it is, is interesting. It is to me. And it seems like if, if we did decide to do something in terms of a explanation of what's going on there, that would be a nice piece of it also.
We've had public hearings on it, like that's, that's a.
I, I just meant for that day though.
Yeah, do you have a map of like the final design?
They're not, I, I don't have anything large scale. They're all, they're all just part of the, the proposals and.
Yeah.
But eight and a half by 11 could be put on the table?
I, I. Assured, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
That'd be wonderful.
JP sidewalk. Okay. So did we? We might have, so we talked about having four people, two shifts of two people.
Yeah, I can, I can pop in and out and I will be there the whole time, but I have to do double duty, so. I can pop over.
Put the two next to each other.
Yeah, there we go.
But all you have to have me do is have my head on a swivel and I pivot. The last time you were, you were across the way from us, so put us next to us. We'll have the, uh, electric vehicle again? From Brock?
Uh, no, none of that's been set up, I don't think. The energy committee was kind of dormant.
But, I mean, you invited Brock, right? So we can bring whatever we want.
Oh, okay, okay.
All right. So I, I, I was coordinating with Bill and I'll just bring all of the toys with Brock.
Whatever you like, yeah. That'd be great.
Yeah, we won't have all the other people that we had last year, all the other.
I, I, I don't know anything about that. I don't. Although, I mean, Veep does a great job. You know?
Yeah.
I mean, from an education standpoint. We've got lots of.
Do you want to reach out to them? I, I don't, I don't have their contact. You can all reach out to them and.
Veep, uh, okay. Remind me.
Write them back. We weren't happy to.
Yeah, I, I like Veep. And they're doing adult education too, so that's even better. So, okay, contact.
Kids are pretty preoccupied. Except when the ice cream truck would come. They were in the water.
Ice cream truck means timeout for everybody.
Okay, so same types of demonstrations that they did last time?
Sure.
Yep. It's just, it's just educational and I remember when they did two of their demonstrations, there were at least 20 people hanging around.
It's wonderful. It'd be great. Yeah, absolutely. I, 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 we'd, we'd be happy to have it.
Okay.
I can dig up some contact info too.
Yep, I've got them in my, yeah, but go ahead.
If you need more.
All right. I'll check with Barbara if I need anything, yep.
Okay. August 24th. Put it in your calendars. Um, down to like announcements, uh, I gave you almost a year in budget actuals report.
Yep. We spent 70%.
Thank you. Do the math.
Hey, that's what I do. You give me a list of numbers and I calculate them. We have about 30% left.
Well, it matters now because camp stuff.
And even before the fiscal year ends, they, they.
Well, there's some that must be in the hopper that are being paid.
What the board met last Tuesday, that's the last opportunity to spend money from this fiscal year or so. Yeah.
But if we have any print, I mean, we'll, we'll have the, the same budget going forward.
It's already been.
There is a pay raise built in for the planning commission.
Well, thanks.
Um, so if we need anything for like the, the townwide celebration, any printing or anything like that?
Yeah, my, my point was twofold in, in doing this. One, that there'll be probably less than that. Well, there's less than, it's not quite 30% because the 70% is a little slightly over, 70%, but, um, that should cover whatever additional expenses are still pending. And it gives us also a, a good idea of, uh, of planning for next year, that if we want to do something earlier in the year, we probably have the funds in almost all of these categories, uh, to help with that. So.
Remind me, are we going to fiscal year or calendar year?
Fiscal.
Date fiscal year. So, the end of June.
End of June. So we're, we're home free except for what hasn't been paid.
Yeah, which probably isn't.
We're, we're, we're fine. Yep.
So we'll be giving money back. Not, not that much. Where does it go?
If there's a surplus in the general account, it goes to the capital improvement fund.
That's where this goes.
So we still, we still have some legal expenses that haven't been invoiced yet, I mean, from, for like the.
Well, and the other thing is, is that most of those legal expenses, if we, if I remember correctly from last year, were being expensed through the select board anyway. So our budget doesn't always accurately characterize that. So, yeah, we have 3,300 left out of the 11, 11,024.
We're in good shape.
Very good shape.
Any other announcements? From anybody? Okay. We've got one seven minutes from May 30th.
Move to approve the minutes of May 30th.
We had, uh, almost everyone here. All.
Yep. All but, uh.
But remove me.
All but Mary Beth. Well, actually, Mary Beth, you're listed on here, so somebody else was missing too. Uh, one, two, three.
Andy came in. Oh, Andy's here.
Seven, eight.
Well, I think Norm couldn't get in either, but was able to at the end of the meeting, so maybe.
And no one is listed.
Right. Oh, okay. So you're me, meaning someone else besides us?
Yeah.
I, I couldn't quite hear what you said.
Oh, just that somebody else besides either of us was not there. Or listed, but wasn't actually there?
Five.
You just come back. You were on Zoom, right? Because you would just come back from your.
Yeah, I was on Zoom. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, something puzzled me here and maybe she, Mary Beth covered it, but I couldn't make it out. But it said there were nine people present and all members are voting members.
There were eight people present.
Okay. So who was not present?
I'm, I'm trying to figure that out. No, Mary Beth was listed on here. So somebody's name.
I thought you were, didn't you sign out or something, Mary Beth?
What was that?
All nine are listed.
No, I never, I was trying to log in and I was never let in. Was the only thing.
That's right. For some reason I counted eight.
It, it just seems strange. It's, uh, there were nine people, eight or nine people.
Yeah, they're all listed, yep.
But it says all members are voting members for this week.
Yeah.
And that's not, I don't see.
Jim is the alternate.
Okay. So I don't know whether it makes a lot of difference, but that was the only correction I had.
Yep.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I, I second.
Oh, did you? Okay, sorry about that. Any other discussion?
Uh, I just modify my, uh, motion to accept the minutes as amended with Jim Hall being listed as an alternate. And Mary Beth's being struck from those in attendance. Per Mary Beth's request.
Being struck? Did you say?
Well, yeah, to be removed from the list of those present because she said she was having difficulties getting on.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So that makes, now that all members are voting members for this meeting, that makes sense now?
No, it doesn't. Because there were nine. I miscounted. There were, there are nine people listed. I only, for whatever reason, I counted eight. So, uh, Jim Hall would have been the alternate. He still is the alternate, but Mary Beth was not present. Otherwise, uh, if Mary Beth had been present, both Norman and Jim would have been alternates. So Jim Hall was the alternate and Mary Beth was not present.
So we should say.
I'm making, uh, I'm amending my motion.
Strike that sentence.
There, there were eight people present. Is that what we're saying?
Yes. And that, that Jim Hall, instead of the last sentence, all members are voting members? No. Jim Hall is the alternate. All other members are voting members.
And did not vote.
What's that?
All other members. Okay, you want to keep that line in? Just add all other members? Okay.
And take Mary Beth's name out.
Right. So you would like to mend your motion in that regard?
Right.
Okay, with the second.
Yes, yes. I, I was not going to read now.
Um, commission members present, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll, I'll read it. The commission members present, Chair Barbara Pulling, Dana Peterson, Howard Burgess, Sherman, Hunter Jerry Sterns, Andy McCain, Norman Cohen, and Jim Hall. Jim is, uh, the alternate member. Uh, all other members are voting members for this meeting.
That's comfortable.
Okay. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Most?
You're opposed?
Just.
I think there's a delay. I'm having a delayed tonight.
Zooming delay.
Sorry, I, I, I couldn't resist, Mary Beth. It was just.
Problem maker.
I'm, I'm punchy at, at, at 7:35.
The NBA playoffs are over.
That's true. Celtics won.
Should be catching up on your sleep now.
Actually, I only watched a, a small amount of the, uh, the finals. My wife is not a basketball fan and preferred to watch the Red Sox. After the Bruins got, ooh, humiliated. It's baseball periods.
Don't let Norm hear you. Anything else?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
That's good.
I'll second.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.